Why don't we do our warrant review, our warrant review and sign our warrant review right now? So we'll start with, why don't we start with Article 34, the sale of Serturka Park.
Okay, putting on my park and recap, the commission definitely discussed given the changes from Northham to Hall and the petition for Tommie Rose that the sale of Serturka Park and Becky Test serve coming up perhaps the Fall Town meeting when there is quite enough activity on parcel sale and moving. So we were at this point looking to defer till fall.
Okay.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, so why don't we actually, let's talk about Article 16, asbestos abatement and additional costs. From the building committee?
Yes, so I, the biggest issue that we're faced is this additional $8,200 and where we might be able to get that. I know that we're short of free cash and other ways of paying for this. I would like to suggest if we could sit down with CPA and discuss this with them. In my opinion, this is not a maintenance item. This is about a floor that's 55 years old that has, it's beyond its lifespan. And I would hope that we would be able to get this money through some type of CPA funding.
So if we do that, we'd have to wait till Fall Town meeting, so we're gonna put the project, because the CPA's already submitted their articles.
They can't reopen? Would you request it?
Can they do it in three weeks?
So Tim and I had a chance to talk about the timing on this, and it's entirely up to you as to when you, how late into the season do you want to go before you sign the warrant? The last day to do so would be April 29th. If in between, the municipal building committee can work with the historic commission and CPA to raise the additional funds for this project, we still have, we still have time to bid this out and do the work. We talked about this in the department head meeting, maybe not in, late July as we had envisioned, but the first part of August, that still works for the department heads.
The problem is that timing is paramount on this with regard to when we can do it, when it works well with the departments and with weather. We can't, you know, we're going, if we wait until winter, it doesn't work with all the departments and it, it's an added cost because we have to shut down the heating system for this type of work and we'll take.
This annual or next annual, but not fall is what you're saying?
Yeah, we'd like to try to see if we can, I hope we can get your support with the CPA and tell them, look, this, this is what the perception from a lot of people was, well, that this money was for, was to help with the renovation of these buildings. I hope that we can work something out. It is, again, it's not a maintenance item.
Well, Tim, all they can do though is adhere to the actual CPA regulations, I mean, and give an interpretation. Have you even run it by Edwin or anybody at this point?
Yes, I have. We had one individual, Mr. Fixgivens, said it wasn't because it was a maintenance problem. I talked to Mr. Matusko the other day, and he said the best thing for us is to bring it, fill out the paperwork and bring it to the full board and explain the situation with them because he's under the same pain as Mr. Fixgivens was. So there, our last ditch would be to bring it to the board, CPA.
Okay, but their, their initial reading is that it would not be allowable?
That's right.
Why?
We can confirm that with CPA in Boston. I mean, they tell us what's in and what isn't.
Correct.
I mean, so a telephone call down to, absolutely, the state CPA board will let us know.
Correct.
Who could do that for us?
Edwin?
I'll, I'll call Edwin and see what, if we can do that.
When's the next meeting?
We don't have a next meeting. I don't, we stopped our meeting a month ago because we've gone through all the applications.
Is there any way you can have another meeting?
That's for him to call. He's, he's the chair.
I mean, all we're looking is, we're short on it. This has turned out to be a big issue.
Okay, so I think we're okay with this.
But do we have a plan B?
We can leave this on the agenda, we can take a position, they can work it out, and if we need to at town meeting, then we can pass it over.
So, but is, this is the last resort?
This is the plan B, unless we take it out of free cash.
No, what about the money we put aside into a revolving account for Russell School?
You can't, yeah, this is not Russell School.
Oh, just Russell School.
Unless we let Russell School go away, and that money would come into free cash, and you can spend it, you can reallocate it later.
That's what I'm talking about.
What are your suggestions?
My suggestion, my suggestion would be if you can't, if you can't do this, then we have to wait till the fall, and then you're gonna put the project off another, another season.
You really think that's a wise idea?
No. Let's do, let's take it out. If you need to, we'll take the money out there and put it back into free cash.
Well, then you're, then you're tying these two articles, so that means you gotta convince town meeting to let that money go into free cash, and then we have to appropriate it, which we don't have an article to appropriate it. We can appropriate it from the free cash we have, and then at Fall Town meeting, take the 96 and put it into capital. So you're like Mick, it's a, it's a daisy chain.
It's okay if there's, if there's money there. We need to get this floor done this summer, not next year.
So then, so then the choice then, if you really want to do it this time, is we take what's left in capital and you take what's left, and take a little bit out of free cash. Because there's 36,000.
No, 34.
So there's 34 in free, in the capital stabilization, and then you're taking 50, 50, right?
So, so the figure that I threw down was $82,000, which is the difference between what's in your budget currently and what the estimate, plus the 10% contingency for that project is. But I think, Timmy, we're talking about a smaller number.
Yeah, it's one of the, again, we can manipulate this in different directions. We have, we threw the 17,000 back into this, we can take that out of the 50 that we've set aside for professional services. That's one of the things that we discussed many months ago, and that's where we were going to take it out initially. So when we knew that we were going to go over, we said, well, let's throw it back in and see what we can do, but we didn't realize that we were going to be short funds at the same time. So I think what I really, again, we're looking at an estimate. We are very hopeful that when we really get into getting this out, out on the streets, and that would be hoped that we can do tonight, is get your vote to get this out on the street. Could be, well, be that the price is going to be a lot less than what the estimate is. So, you know, we have so many variables, but I think the timeframe is critical. I mean, if we don't do it now, we're going to be off another year, it's going to be a lot more money, and it is, it's getting to be a health issue when you start looking at this.
But from the, from our standpoint, we just have to appropriate the money, so.
So we have alternate, alternate ways of funding this.
So the, the other issue is if we bid, and the bids come in higher, and we're above our appro, they're above our appropriation, the project is.
It's all, we all understand.
Okay.
We will have to.
So, so then, if we want to move it along, then if we take the 17,000 for this, for the professional services, out of the professional services money we gave, then we're down to 65,000. We take, so 34 out of capital, and then it has, rest has to come out of free cash if we want to move this project along.
We can reduce the overhead too.
Move part of that money out.
I would rather use what we have already appropriated instead of having to tie it on the daisy chains.
Yeah, because there's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee. People could just bust the daisy chain, the project's dead.
I know, and at this point, Tim, you, you said that they feel pretty confident with just the $49,000 override right now.
Yes.
Over budget or whatever you wanna call it.
Yes. They've asked them several times.
So.
That's 51.
No, it's 49.
So 34, so we're gonna recommend approval of this article, taking 34,000 out of capital, stabilization, and the remainder out of?
Professional services.
Free cash.
Lynn, how much was in that capital, 32?
There's only, I think, 34 left.
Did it 34? I thought it was 32.
So.
17 from.
Yeah, we'll still pursue the CPA.
We're taking 65,000, that 65,000 broken down to 34 from capital stabilization, and the remainder from free cash, which, my brain just failed in doing that simple math, I apologize. What's that number for free cash?
31.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Yes, so if we are gonna, if we're gonna pursue CPA funds, if it looks like this is gonna be a CPA project, you know, if it has a pulse, let me know because I have to change the wording of the article.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, building repairs, $200,000. So this is a request to take $200,000 of money we don't have and put into something we very much need to do, but we don't have money to do right now. Did I sum that up right? I apologize for being snarky. I really apologize for being snarky, but that's kinda, we need to do this, but we don't have the funds to do it right now. So do we want to take money from somewhere and start this, or do we want to?
Is there a recommendation from the finance committee if there, there's been a request submitted to us? I don't know if you heard it last week or not.
No, we haven't.
Can we have that explained to them so they, they may have an idea or stuff?
You're not gonna get it now.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be nice to know what, what some of these things are before we're asked to vote on them.
I completely agree, but if it was proposed to you, so they understood what it, what they were looking for and why they were looking for it, we could again begin to work this into the matrix.
So why don't we have a building committee to explain it to us one more time?
Yeah, well, I was the one that proposed it, and we gave the selectmen a number of months ago of metrics, showing the repairs that we're planning on doing to some of these towns built, i.e. the senior center, third floor. Hopefully, we can get the mold out of there and fix the hallway going up and fix the walls that are open, the toilet that we never have money for and haven't had in three years, things like that. So, you know, and the matrix outside of the critical needs, ones that we've been working on, has a number of products there, you know, and you should have a copy of that, so I'm not gonna argue with all of them. And we figured that with the $200,000, we can start once we finish with the critical needs, which will probably be in the winter time.
Like the second phase of your, your three, three step plan that you had.
Yeah.
For repairs to all the municipal buildings.
Attention.
And what had happened was, over the years, as we just talked about an hour and a half ago, when we do go and cut, start cutting, what had happened over the last 10 years or 15 years, wherever the maintenance was in their budgets was where it was cut. Obviously, there was no people cut, there were no jobs cut, there was no equipment cut. They were finagling their budgets to get it to the bottom line, where it was level funded at, for years and years and years.
Okay, so are, do we want to, do we want to put any money into this?
From where?
There's no money.
Once you got your pocket.
I mean, I think it's a good idea, not opposed to the concept.
It's something that, and I mean, we're not asking for that, excuse me, right now, but if we should have some spare money this fall, that comes maybe pennies from heaven, you know, we can then say, all right, we got this came in, let's give it to the department so that they can fix that. We've got, one of the main things we want to do over there for senior centers, we have heat pipes that go up in the wall, and should be radiators that are up in holes that are on, running all the time. We've gotta cut a hole in the wall, get in and take the old radiators out that are just running full bill apps all the time, not eating nothing but the outside. You know, these are things.
That might be more than a $200,000 price tag when you start moving pipes and radiators. We understand the concept that these things have to be done, and, you know, I think going to the fall, if you're willing to wait, see what the pot of gold is in the fall.
So we're looking at dismissing it for annual town meeting?
Correct. Is that okay?
Yeah, well, I, that's, that's fine, if you, I mean, in relation, I mean, we've just so much money, but these are little things that have to be done, and like I said, that radiator joint we found is, it used to be in the second floor, but they pushed it in, closed it, so it's just hanging there.
Okay, so.
So this is something that.
We're looking to dismiss this from annual town meeting?
Yes. Yes.
So do we want a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we dismiss this from annual town meeting.
Is there a second? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But what I, what I would ask though is that, if this comes back in the fall, that it be accompanied with a very specific work plan?
We will do that.
It's part of the matrix.
Okay.
It's all, it's all part of the original program you guys put together.
So let's do Article 35, tax regulations.
Okay, so the chief and I talked about this briefly, it's under review by council.
Is this cookie cutter?
This, we borrowed this from Amherst.
Uh-oh.
No. That's the way it doesn't sound right. I haven't read it.
See, that's what I heard, so I figured.
Please continue.
Please continue, okay. So as I, as I said before, this thing, this bylaw arose because of a need that developed after this office received a number of complaints about passengers and taxi cabs. Taxi cabs operate out of Northampton and Amherst, and they provide transportation from those two places to Hadley, and they also provide service within Hadley from pickup spot in Hadley to a destination in Hadley. Under the mass general law, you're allowed to, each town is allowed to promulgate regulations that would help and control behavior of taxi cab companies that might be predatory or might be in some way harmful to people. So when we receive these complaints of excessive fares or fares that didn't seem to be consistent from one week to the next, or the lack of identification of taxi cab drivers, we looked at our bylaws and found that we had absolutely nothing on the books that would regulate taxi businesses within the town of Hadley. So borrowing from the town of Amherst and changing it to meet Hadley's needs, we put together these rules and regulations for use and operation of taxi businesses. At this point, it's under review by legal. It's up to you, it's, what is your pleasure?
I think the last time we had asked for Chief Mason to take a look at this, you said the two of you got together. Chief, do you have any comments on it?
I would agree with David. We, we looked at it, and I know there was some concerns raised at the meeting with regards to licensing and things like that.
The taxis now are under the law of the Department of Public Utilities, is that correct for the state?
Yes.
So have those complaints been lodged with the state, with the DPU?
Yes.
Those are the people that regulate the rates.
And the answer that comes back is that it depends on what regulations are in effect in each city and town, and right now, we have not.
So they can't enforce our regulations, is what they're saying?
Well, if we don't have regulations, they can enforce it.
Their regulations are to follow what our regulations are?
That's right. Each city and town has the ability to adopt bylaws and regulations regulating taxes.
Why don't we adopt the DPU regulations to start with, and then adjust from there instead of taking the town of Amherst, which probably don't match anything that we really want?
Yes, the board would like to defer this to the Fall Town meeting, that's fine with me.
I'd like to do a little bit more research on it.
Well, I will tell you that if this is Amherst, then this is what was written by Coffman and Page, which is also our attorney. So if we defer it to the town meeting, you're not gonna get anything different than what you pretty much have here if they tweak it a little bit, and it's gonna be the, so it's, it's not gonna.
From the guy who used to stand up there with the gavel, this thing's a nightmare. It's, it is.
Could I just hear the rest of what Chief Mason's response was?
Yeah, essentially, I was just gonna say that because of that concern, David and I looked at it, and that's why I really prefer to have it looked at by town council first. It just felt like the safest way to go before we really got into it as far as our personal regulations.
I'll just share with you the, one of the complaints that I received, that somebody was picked up at Hopkins Academy and driven to the elementary school, and that fare cost $25.
Well, like I said, the DPU has a regulation on it, and I'd really like, do you have that in writing of what they actually do? They, they've gotta stand behind a law.
So I guess I'm hearing we wanna let the lawyers look at it until Fall Town meeting?
That would be fine with me.
All right, is there a motion?
So.
Are we dismissing it to Fall Town meeting?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second. Were there, many complaints? David?
Yeah, they, they come and go. It seems like that, that people who use it get fed up with the service and find other ways of avoiding some of the practices that we keep on hearing about.
Okay, so the last one before the big dive is Article 8, FY15 budget adjustments. So that is now $91,000.
All right, so there are, I believe, five adjustments to the FY15 budget that we're asking you to contemplate. The first one is the police expense budget, an increase of $5,070, and this is because we entered into a grant agreement, which we thought was a 100% reimbursable, and it turned out to be a 75% reimbursable grant. There was a 911 equipment grant for communications, and if we could restore $5,070 back into the police department budget. Second one is the police overtime. We're estimating that to the end of the fiscal year, there's gonna be a shortfall of $20,000 in the police salary line, so we're asking for a $20,000 increase to that line in order to take us to the end of the fiscal year. Snow and ice, the snow and ice shortfall is not entirely addressed by this budget request. We're going to try to transfer $9,900 from our overtime account, which is running in the black, to the snow and supplies, snow supplies and ice shortfall. So, and then additional $42,300 from free cash in order to cover that shortfall. So we have, we have in the snow and ice, we have overtime, which we have not used, and we've overrun on materials.
So that's the total of the 91?
The 42, 300 plus the 91.
42, 300 plus 91.
So we'd, so we'd be transferring from the surplus, the $9,900 to cover a shortfall, and then the remainder of the shortfall to be covered by 42, 300. This health insurance, looking at the activity and projecting that to the end of the fiscal year. We had thought that this would be a $20,000 shortfall, we're now thinking that it's gonna be a $15,000 shortfall. The activity in the health insurance account occurred early in the year when we had a lot of people going from single or two-purpose and plans to family plans with the addition of babies to their families, as well as changes in the larger employment picture where people were losing benefits and they were transferring over to the town benefits. So we think that we're okay for 16, but 15, we think that there's a $15,000 shortfall. And then Medicare, an increase of $8,739, and this is based upon total payroll.
So that's the 91, 109?
Yep.
So the 20 is actually a 15 even, and then eight, Medicare's 8,7?
739.
739.
And I have a, I have a hundred.
Yeah, no, that's just out of the equation.
Treasurer?
No, we don't need that in the treasurer. We had thought that we would need something there when we were looking at temporary employees from temp agencies, and we didn't go that route, so we don't need to go there. We also have a water line adjustment, transferring 11,2757 from the water reserves to the FY15 water budget. This is a reimbursement from the town of Sunderland associated with the Shattuck Road project, and that reimbursement went directly to the reserves and not to the operational budget.
Okay. So is there any discussion about this article? 91,109 from our certified free cash?
This is coming from the 200. Did you do the goal forward of the free cash, like the spreadsheet that shows if the articles get voted?
Yes, I did.
I thought I said, is that in here?
It should be in your book.
Right, I didn't see it.
There, there you go.
Which one is that on?
It's in the section with the tripod. So 91, 109, no, definitely 11, so.
Yep.
Okay, so that's what's.
There it is.
And we took out the 9200. So right now, the only thing that we're taking from the certified free cash is this 91,109?
You also just decided that you were gonna take some money out of free cash to, from the asbestos project.
31,000 or the?
31,000.
31,000, yeah. So that should go in here. So we've got 291, is our starting point?
292.
292.
Any more discussion about this one? Do you want to make a motion? Pretty much something we have to do.
It's leaving the witness.
We spent it already.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 91,109 total line item changes to the FY15 budget as presented.
Second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that leaves us 77,000.
171.
171.
All right, so are you two here for anything else?
I guess I'm number nine.
So, number nine.
It's just for you to sign the joint block motion and appoint me as your emergency responsible editor for every complaint.
Is there any discussion about this?
Someone?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you say my revised?
Yeah, it's in the revised agenda.
What revised agenda?
The one that was posted on Monday. It should be a... Did you pass off the revised agendas?
No, eight. We did eight.
Is it the last one or is there nothing else?
That's all right. There must be an eight, though, because mine is at seven.
There is. H, record retention policy.
Ah, wait.
So if we want to finish, if we want to close out the warrant article discussion, we're ready to go back into the omnibus budget if we're ready. Okay, so the last thing we have to do is go back to the warrant review and figure out our budget that we're going to submit. So our number is...
56,717.
Half of that, right?
The half of that.
Oh, half of it.
Yeah, 56. Oh, it's 28,358.50 cents.
What was that, 28?
28,358.
All 59. Question? Right now, we fund a portion of TB5 out of the general fund. You could switch that all entirely over to the, to the charter gift account.
How much would that be?
Well, we have, we have a lot of money in that account right now.
Oh, how much?
I could look it up for you.
Anxious.
What's the line item number?
Line item is...
How much?
Just after the enterprise funds, it's in human services. Legal TV, it's 16,300, looks like.
Yeah.
What's that right there?
Another 16.
What? I had to take my glasses off.
So that leaves us with another 16.
Yep. So we take it out of some overtime accounts?
What about the health insurance? How hard a number is that?
We just added a police officer, too. Is anybody taking that into account when we upgraded the overtime accounts, or was that just done on the history of having a light force?
Yeah, it was history.
Yeah, that should, that should reduce your overtime dependence on overtime, because you don't have to be filling that open shift with overtime.
By $16,000 over the course of the year? We just allocated 20,000 for it, right?
Yes.
Is 10 available out of there reasonably?
I guess that depends entirely on the success of your contract negotiations. This is driven a lot by your contract.
I don't know whether we want to do that now. On the health insurance line item?
Yep.
If we're looking for another, what?
16,3. 16,3.
Are we?
No.
No, it's...
No, we're at 28 minus 16, so 12.
It's 12, 63, it's 12, 653.
What would be the danger of taking $12,000 out of health insurance?
The danger is you don't know where that budget is going to go. You've got qualifying life events that can drive those numbers, and then the health insurance fiscal year does not line up with houses.
12,53.
So you've got a three-year, you've got a three-month period on the other end that you don't know, and then you've got open enrollment in February. So you've got a lot of moving parts here.
What about work months count?
We already...
Ready to touch that?
Yeah, I think, thank you.
Well, the other one is, is the 25,000 for unemployment, take a little bit out of there.
You could. I would take it out of unemployment rather than the health insurance.
We'll take the 12 out of there?
Yep.
How much?
12,000.
So we're cutting that?
So we're cutting it down to 13,000 instead of 25.
Okay. So that's unemployment?
Yep.
Well, wait a minute, we could take it out of building maintenance. That was just a joke.
You've got to get it back.
I'm ready to do it.
I meant the...
So that wraps that.
Well, if you're talking about buildings, there's North Hadley Villachal. You can pick up $20,000 right quick.
We probably won't be through with it, though.
No.
I think we'll be able to...
Although, we're moving, we're moving ahead with the, I mean, we should have the historic restrictions back soon, and everyone, I think, is okay with what the parameters are for, or what the review criteria is for the RFP. So we should be out on the street before the end of this year.
It won't have those right now, though.
No, well, we're talking about next year, so then we cut that in half, knowing that we might be out of building by the middle of December.
It should have been by December, so we don't have to heat it.
You're only talking about maintenance. You haven't even said anything about the heating, though.
Unless, unless with the 20,000 is for heating.
That's been under public safety, the heating part of it, right?
It's split.
It's split between public safety.
All right, are we comfortable with what we did?
Yeah.
Yep.
All those in favor of what we did?
So 16 out of TB5 and 12 out of unemployment?
Correct.
Yep. And what are the changes?
It's being refunded out of the balance from charter. It's not being reduced at all, Richard.
Yeah, so you're going to be funded entirely 100% out of the charter gift account?
Yeah.
For this year.
Well, the line item's still going to stay in.
There's still some...
It'll show zero.
See what happens when we walk out of the room?
We thought we should have some money who's here, so at least they know.
All right.
All right, so that's what we're going to propose, is our budget.
Correct.
Okay, and then we're proposing that the budget of the school just be reduced by that 20...
There will be reduced by the other half.
28,358.50.
Yep.
Correct. We're going to use 55,000 of free cash.
55,000 of free cash. Certified free cash.
Now, they could answer, work that out for us.
So that's an easy change, so we get to that, everybody?
What I'll do is I'll make the changes tomorrow and just circulate them so that everybody has a chance to make sure...
With the right date at the top of the paper.
Correct.
Did he get, was, did he get that email or not?
He did get that email. I sent it out personally.
He personally told you he got that email? Or we're assuming that he did and it was the wrong date on it?
It may, it may have been the wrong date. I don't have that particular file right here, so I'm going to check it.
Yeah, and I thought Linda was nodding in agreement that she received it.
Okay.
Yeah, I know I sent it out. So...